I call the order, the City of Westbin, the Board of Public Works. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one would be the Board of Public Works regular meeting from December 16th for the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any corrections, deletions? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, ordinance amending section 13.18 of the municipal code sewer service charges. Good evening, Ruth.
Good evening, John. Tonight we bring before you an amendment to section 13.18 of the municipal code specifically relating to sewer service charges for outside. I'll start over. I'm sorry. Tonight we bring before you an amendment to section 13.18 of the municipal code specifically relating to sewer service charges for outside haulers and wholesale customers. The proposed changes to this section are necessary due to the increase in rates that was approved by the Board of Public Works and Common Council. This amendment incorporates the step-two increase that became effective on January 1st, 2025, and ensures that the code reflects the current rate schedule. The amendment for the rates applicable to general utility billing service charges will be brought forth at a later date as we are awaiting data needed to complete that section of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen. Second.
Second.
Alderwoman Sizer. Are there any questions for Ruth? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ruth. Item number three, HSIP 02, Washington Street, resolution for right-of-way dedication from city-owned parcel. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item and the one coming after it are both for land acquisition that was done or that is being done as part of the HSIP program through the Federal Highway Administration. The City Secured Fund funds through a grant for this program to improve three intersections along Washington Street, at 18th Avenue, at Main/7th Avenue, and at River Road. In order to upgrade those intersections, land acquisition was necessary from private property owners but also from parcels owned by the city. The Federal Highway Administration requires a formal action from Common Council to acquire this land from the city. So this one is for right-of-way dedication at one intersection, and you have the parcel, it's parcel number 13, from the relocation plat, and we recommend that the board and council approve the resolution in order to secure that land acquisition for the project.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen, a second. Who do you have a second? Alderwoman Sizer. Are there any questions for Max? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, four, HSIP 02, Washington Street, resolution to grant temporary limited easements on city-owned parcels.
So this is the same situation, but in this case is to grant temporary limited easements for the construction rather than the first parcel was for right-of-way. These easements are granted so that the contractor can enter the property, do some grading, restoration on the parcel during the work, and those easements will expire after the construction is completed. So for the same reason, we're recommending that the board and council approve the resolution for the temporary limited easements.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen?
Second.
Alderman?
Schmidt.
Oh, Schmidt, okay. Any questions? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
There being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have eight agenda items this evening. The first is the approval of the minutes of the Finance Committee regular meeting held on January 6th. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderman Allen. Any edits, changes, additions, deletions? There being none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Second agenda item this evening is an ordinance to repeal and replace municipal code section 2.11, salaries and expense allowance. I will turn this over to Alderman Allen.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance that repeals and replaces section 211, salaries and expense allowance. This ordinance, the purpose of this ordinance is to adjust salaries and expenses to reflect 33 years of inflation, for all practical purposes.
A motion has been made. Is there a second? I'll ask again if there's a second.
I don't know if I can do, if, can I make a motion that those salary increases would be adjusted a little less than where we are at? Ian, can you help me on that?
Would we need a second to entertain discussion?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can do a second just for discussion purposes, and then you can always amend the motion moving forward.
Okay.
And this is, I mean, keep in mind, this is a recommendation to council. Both this ordinance and the one for the sewer changes will be pulled out to act for actual, like, votes on the council agenda, not on the consent agenda. So at that point, you can always make the motion to approve the ordinance with whatever changes as well.
Okay. I'll do that.
Should we make it a second just for discussion purposes at this point?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Allen and seconded by Alderman Buchlich. Is there any discussion or questions for Alderman Allen? Please.
Yeah, I went back and took a look at what has happened historically, and we basically in 1993, we moved the expenses or the salary and expenses into municipal code from whatever separate source it previously was in. And they weren't adjusted at that point. They were simply moved as they existed at that point. There has been one adjustment to the mayoral salary in 1996 and a, or 1997, and one adjustment or two adjustments to alderperson salaries occurring in 97 and 2003. What I, what I took a look at was the fact that they really haven't been adjusted very much at that point and haven't been adjusted since. I went back historically and talked to some people that were around at that time, like Mayor Mike Miller. He was, he was the mayor at the time, has, has been, was since the late 70s when he was first elected. And there really hasn't been much adjustment of salaries or expenses. The other, the other thing that's in here is the removal of one of the expense categories for the public works president. I asked about that, and Mike's response was, "Well, I never really knew why it was like that. It was just always like that when I came on." And so there really doesn't appear to be a justification to have a two-tiered alderman expense amount. And so I proposed reduce, removing that in this proposed legislation. And the, what I did was I went back to 1993, when the salaries came in from wherever they were maintained prior to that and became part of the municipal code, and, and brought them up to just using the cost of living adjustments from the Social Security Administration. And that's, that's how the numbers were arrived at.
I do have one question, and it gets to understanding, much like we have done with our non-representative employees or non-representative employees as well as those that are in our unions. Have you, have we gone out and done comps in other communities to see what mayors and alder, alderpersons are being compensated for their time?
I informally did it, and I, I looked at a number of cities that were smaller than us, actually. The ones, not everybody has their salaries easily available online, so. But, you know, there's, I looked at Onalaska where our fire chief came from, and they, they have their salaries online. We would be in line with their salary scale with these, these additions or these changes. And their, their city's half the size of ours. So, or not quite half, but almost, almost half. There were very few that were, that were less than us, and they were all, like, small villages, not, not cities. The other, the other thing, one of the reasons that I did this was I took a look, and it's not cheap to be an alderman. I mean, you're not making money, even, even with these, these raises, you know, basically applying cost of living, that never happened or only partially happened. The, the cost of living hasn't been kept up with. So we're basically saying, you know, if you need to hire a babysitter to, to be on the common council, we don't want you. You know, I think at a minimum, we should, you should be able to hire a babysitter to cover your meetings, and, and these, these will just, just about do that. This is an issue that came up at, at the school board for three years running, and for three years running, it was approved to, to increase the compensation for the school board members by the elector, or what are they? Mayor, if you could, what, what do you, they call them the constituents or?
Yeah, the annual.
The annual, it's the shareholders' meeting is what it's called, so, you know, but basically people that are the electors in the school vote on this, and for three years running, it received like 60% approval. Luckily, we'll not have to do that again. It was, it was drafted slightly differently the, the third year, and so those, those raises became permanent. But I, I think it's, I think not, not raising, not raising the compensation for the mayor and the alderman is going to eliminate possibly good people from running because they just can't afford it.
And just so everybody knows, the reason it's structured as 2027 is you have to approve the salary prior to the first day that anybody can pull papers for a position. So essentially, if you were going to raise the salary for the people elected in the spring, you would have had to enact this by the end of November. So rather than phase it in where half the alderpersons get a raise in 2026 and half in 2027, you, you basically have those two choices. You do a two-year phase in, or you just say, hey, this is two years out so that there's two election cycles in between. That's why it's 2027, so.
I, I don't disagree with, with the increase. I look back as well. It's been a long time since there has been anything to the mayor or the council, and that probably should have been adjusted at least 10 years ago that we should have gotten it. I have no objection to seeing a raise, but it would be interesting to see what other aldermen and other mayors in the community compare to us, what, what their salaries are, and I would be, I would like to just postpone this until our next meeting, put it on the next meeting, and summon that information available to us so we can make a good, sound decision on, yes, we are here. And I, I totally agree with Mark. I give Mark a lot of credit for going, for doing this, and, but I think we really need to have something in front of us to explain, yes, all the aldermen our size and a mayor are at this rate or less, and then I would, I would, with flying colors, I'd be happy to approve this. So could we just put this up for next meeting?
You would just move to postpone consideration?
Yep, just move to postpone until the next meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to postpone. Is there any discussion on the motion or second to postpone? Otherwise, all those in favor of postponing any action on this, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Do we have to close out the original motion, Ian, or does that motion to postpone postpone it?
It would just postpone it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Alderman Allen and Alderman Buchlich, for that commentary. Jay, is just similar, similar to what we have done for other instances, are you able to, or have access through your sources as to?
Yep.
Coincomparables that you can, you can prepare for the council?
I can do that.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to our third agenda item this evening, a resolution to accept grant award from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. How are you tonight? First, I apologize as I recognize that the majority of the Finance Committee budget is Fire Department-related. First and foremost, I have a resolution in front of you to consider the acceptance of the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant. Obviously, we have a local franchise of the Firehouse Subs on Main Street here. Part of their operation is they do a roundup on your bill. They collect those funds and then distribute them to fire service organizations across the country, and they really focus on local organizations, which we're really happy about. Battalion Chief Forrester took the lead on this project, identified a important need for the Fire Department, went forward, wrote the grant, was successful in, a successful grant award. So we were awarded $13,422, so 100% funded grant, requires no city match. And the equipment will be used to buy two interceptor power bikes and an e-bike stretcher and accessories. This equipment will be really important for us to deploy during large-scale events, the downtown events or the events in Ragnar Park where access for ambulances can be challenging, and sometimes the ability to put medics out on bicycles can speed up their response. So I'm really happy that Battalion Chief Forrester put forward the work to get us this grant. It's going to be a fantastic tool for the Fire Department.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you very much, Ald, thank you very much, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sparts. Any questions for Chief? There being none? Oops, sorry, Alderman Allen?
I was kind of, kind of interested in how an e-bike stretcher works. I mean, my e-bike doesn't have room for a stretcher unless it's a trailer of some kind.
It's a trailer that goes behind the, behind the bike, so it's going to be pulled, and then it actually can be modified into a trailer to hold bags and stuff, and then modified back into a stretcher.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds interesting.
Any further questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, which much, with much gratitude to Firehouse Subs. Thank you very much. Item number four is a resolution for acceptance of Kelman Cares Grant.
Similarly, we put in a grant for Kelman. Kelman is a local company that does disaster mitigation, board-up services, after-fire, restoration-type services that we deal with pretty regularly. They have a foundation that also issues out community grants. We put in for a grant and was awarded $1,000 from the Kelman Cares Foundation. This money will be used to fund additional battery-powered chainsaw and a battery-powered leaf blower for fire suppression use.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions for Chief on this grant? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, a resolution accepting donations to the Fire Department. Chief.
Trying to make sure I got the right one first. There's two of them. I believe this is the right one. Before you, it was a resolution to accept several donations to the Fire Department as I've come before you many times on my year and a half here to accept donations on behalf of Captain, retired Captain, now Aslan Smoke Detector and Carbon Oxide Program. On his way out the doors retirement, he did a pop-up fundraiser and secured several additional donations for the program, including a $50 donation from Robert Durring, $50 from Jonathan Coats, $50 from Stephen Riffel, $50 from Lynn Thorin, a $500 donation from the Susan M. Stracata Trust, and a $1,000 donation from Alpha Inc., which is an organization he's worked with routinely throughout his career here for these types of things. So we're very happy to have these very generous donations. Obviously, the smoke detectors, I said it once, I'll say it 1,000 times, is the most important thing you can have in your home to protect your family from a fire, allow you to know there's a fire and escape your home. So we can't underscore the importance of the smoke detector and CO detector project.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Burquist. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With, again, much gratitude toward those members of the community making those donations, this motion carries. Item number six is a resolution to accept donations to the Fire Department EMS.
Okay, before you use a resolution, consider to accept a single donation from a previous emergency medical services patient. His name is Peter Ferendorf. I won't share a lot of details due to protected health information, obviously, but he did feel particularly grateful to the Fire Department for a significant medical emergency and wrote us a generous check for $100. We would present that, or we would propose that we put that check in a fund to buy additional needed EMS equipment.
Thank you, Chief.
Second.
Alderwoman Sizer and Alderman Allen, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, with gratitude to Mr. Ferendorf for his generosity, motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number seven is to, to award Q24-05 Construction Manager for Fire Station One. Welcome back, Max and Chief.
Thank you. I'm popping in, but this is a Fire Department item. So this is for the construction of the new Fire Station One. We have our current Fire Station One at the corner of Washington Street and between 7th and 8th Avenue, and we're planning to construct a new Fire Station at the southeast corner of Washington Street and Highway 45. Recently, the City of Westbin hired designer for, for the project, so it's Short Elliott Hendrickson, designer, and now we, we're proposing to hire a construction manager to handle the construction of, portion of the project. S E H, Short Elliott Hendrickson, helped us in the selection of the construction manager. At the time we were writing the memo, we had not interviewed the firms that we had selected for the final round, but we did that earlier last week, and we interviewed three firms, C.D. Smith Construction, Findorth, and Sherer Construction. And after reviewing their proposals and the fee that they were proposing for the contract, the selection committee recommends to award the contract to C.D. Smith Construction. The contract documents are not finalized, but administration and the city attorney, just like they did for the designer, will take care of, of that in the next few days. So we recommend award of the construction management contract for the Fire Station One construction to C.D. Smith Construction.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions or comments for either Max or Chief? Go ahead, Alderman Sparts.
Do we have an estimated cost on any of it?
So we had asked the candidates to structure their fee based on the specific cost of the project construction, the Fire Station construction. We had used a number of $16 million for the fire construction, and C.D. Smith Construction fee for their contract was $967 and $952 for the construction of the Fire Station.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last item on our agenda is a resolution approving consolidated EMS contracts. Chief, one more time.
Thank you. Before I have you, it's just, what I have before you is two contracts, one with the town of Wayne and one with the town of Kewaskom. It's two of the four surrounding government organizations that we anticipate consolidating our EMS operations with. You'll note that they've already been approved and signed by their government boards. They are for six-year agreements for the provision of emergency medical services, specifically the ambulance transport services for those communities, who will still maintain their part of the, the team by providing first responder services for each one of their local jurisdictions.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Buchlich. Any questions for Chief on these two service agreements? There being none, all those in favor, signal, oh, sorry.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Sorry. How do we come up with these numbers?
The cost numbers?
Yeah.
Which number do you, the, for the communities or the?
Well, the, the fees that, we're charging them, right?
Okay, yeah. What we've done is we've tried the best we can to segregate the cost of the provision of ambulance services out of the Fire Department budget into our rescue budget as a division of the Fire Department, and we've taken all those costs, then we've subtracted the revenues that we get from users' fees, from ambulance fees, and for the first three years, we've included some of the cost, some of the funding from the SAFER grant because part of the consolidation discussion from early on was that we would, you know, need additional people and we would share those individuals. So we've applied about 30% of the cost of the SAFER grant towards that. So you have the cost of the service minus those two revenues. What that leads to is a deficit, and it's just the reality of EMS in the, in a larger scale in the whole country is that 911-type emergency medical services typically don't medical services typically don't cover their cost and users' fees. There's a, I'll give you a long lecture about that some other time if you'd like to hear it. But, um, so we've taken the expense, we've minus the revenue, that leads to a deficit. And then we spread that deficit out on a per capita basis among all participants in our new ambulance service area. We felt that that was the fairest way we'd do it and ensure that, you know, every community was paying their fair share and that one community wasn't subsidizing the service of another community.
Thank you very much, Chief. Great question, Bill. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. There being no further business before the finance committee, I adjourn as Chair.
Good evening. It's Monday, January 20th, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Lisa, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
I can.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a quorum of our council here tonight with Alderman Zingshaim. Feeling of, uh, under the weather here tonight, so he's not with us, but we do have a quorum of our council. Our first item of business is Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes from January 6th, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Chief, come on up. We have an oath of officer tonight for Nolan Sell.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Alders, city staff, especially the citizens of West Bend, for letting us have this time to congratulate, welcome, and most importantly, introduce our newest police officer to the community of West Bend. Tonight, I'm here to introduce to you a hometown son who has returned to protect and serve his community. A goal that I am very proud to tell you has been a front of mind of his since he left high school, graduating from West Bend West in 2017, found his way up to University of Wisconsin Oshkosh through a quick trip to Platteville. In 2022, he earned his bachelor's degree from University of Oshkosh in Criminal Justice. He's a member of the National Guard, following his father's footsteps into service as an aviation mechanic stationed here in West Bend and has been working for the last two years to return back to our community. Most recently, he's been employed at the University of Oshkosh, University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Police Department. Started there as a CSO, was promoted to a police officer, went through recruit school through their program, and has been there up until very recently to come back home to join to protect and serve his community. I'll say I personally, I'm very appreciative of Police Officer Nolan Sell. Nolan, we first identified would be a great fit to police our community in November of 2022. But at that time, I was still a little, still, a little, still, still a little stubborn on some of the risks involved in entering the sponsorship model to send our officers through recruit school. Boy, was I wrong. It's a great investment in our community and I'm so proud of the officers we presented through that program. And Nolan truly was the push that I needed to enter that sponsorship model, so I thank him for that. So with that, Nolan, can you step forward? I'd like for us to congratulate and welcome Nolan and support him as he reaffirms his oath of office.
All right, raise your hand, please. Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nolan Sell.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
In the City of West Bend.
In the City of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
I swear that I will support.
I swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Congratulations, welcome.
Congratulations, Chief.
Welcome. Congratulations.
As is our tradition as a police department, we're going to ask that Nolan's father, Terry, come and give his badge down. Do that to represent two things. One, all the work that Terry has represented on the family, all the work the family's done to prepare Nolan over the last 20-plus years, to be a good, productive citizen, to be a public servant and to be the type of officer that deserves, deserves to work with our team back here, deserves to police our community and deserves to be part of our team. So thank you for that. The second piece is to remind you that your work is not done. Law enforcement can be very all-inclusive. We can lose sight sometimes that there's a larger world. Your job as family is to help us, to remind Nolan that there's a larger world out there. A complete person is a complete officer. And so we thank you for your work you did to get him here and give you some homework that is not done yet. So with that, Terry, please put his badge down. Congratulations, Nolan, and welcome home. John Fellowes, come on up. We're going to have John present a downtown master plan quarterly update report.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor. Just tonight, I was going to highlight a few of the things that are actually in the quarterly report, which is attached to your agenda. One of the items is just the participation we had this fall with regard to the planters downtown. We had great mums that were actually from September almost to Thanksgiving, just a few weeks shy of Thanksgiving. We had great fall weather, so there was lots of vibrant colors downtown. And then to start the, the winter season, we had some donations from the private sector as well as the city for the downtown, sort of the, the winter greens. And those were actually installed by volunteers from West Bend Insurance as well as some volunteers from the high school club. So it was a great, uh, community gathering of different perspectives from that, from that perspective. We also had some reconstruction of Walnut Street. It took a little longer than we anticipated, but that wrapped up in December. So we have a really nice new sidewalk, the dumpsters removed, everything, things all kind of cleaned up in that spot. So, uh, once our winter kind of grayness goes away, you'll see that, you know, shiny sidewalk in that particular area. And we're moving forward with our downtown design guidelines with that committee and probably some other things here in 2025.
Any questions on the downtown master plan report? Thank you, John. All right, our consent agenda item tonight, we're going to pull out, um, well, item number four is not going to be included in any part of our consent direction tonight, but we also need to pull out item number 11 as that's an ordinance change and we can't really do that within consent. And so our consent agenda items are five through 10 and 12 and 13.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Buchlich and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll take up item number 11, An Ordnance Amending Section 13.18 of the Municipal Code Sewer Service Charges. Ruth presented on that. It's an ordinance change and so we can vote on it tonight and it will pass if it's a unanimous vote. If it's not unanimous, then we'll have to bring it back for our next council meeting for a second reading. So I will entertain a motion on the ordinance amending section 13.18 of the municipal code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Discussion. Questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We'll move on to our agenda items, uh, number 14. A resolution honoring Acting Fire Battalion Chief Travis Eichmann for 25 years of service. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion by Alderman Sparts and a second by. Alderman Allen will say, I'm going to read this proclamation. Again, this is honoring Chief, Battalion Chief Travis Eichmann for 25 years of service. Whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others and to protect our property and resources from destruction. Whereas Travis Eichmann attended Lake Shore Technical College and was a volunteer firefighter for the town of Sheboygan from 1996 to 1999. He began his service for the West Bend Fire Department in January of 2000 as a firefighter paramedic. In 2003, he became an acting motor pump operator, acting lieutenant in 2005, lieutenant in 2016, and then became acting battalion chief in 2018. Travis is a member of the International Association of Firefighters. He's a great asset to the Fire Department throughout his 25-year career with the City of West Bend. And whereas Travis Eichmann is known to be dedicated to the service of providing high-quality EMS care and continued leadership on the fire grounds, is always willing to step forward with opinion to better the Fire Department, puts himself in a leadership role and takes interest in the history of firefighting. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of West Bend honors Fire Lieutenant Travis Eichmann and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Item number 15, Termination Agreement Between the Board of Regents of the University of Wisconsin System and the City of West Bend Regarding the UWM at Washington County. I don't know, Jay or Ian, you want to just tell us what that?
This is just the agreement, which is terminating the lease with UW, well, originally the, you know, UWWC and, uh, now UWM. So it just terminates the lease with the, uh, that the city has had and amended throughout the years, along with the county with the Board of Regents, so.
Entertain a motion. Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion?
The only question I have, and Ian, you could just, you might have captured in, in your commentary, but this doesn't do anything in terms of the change of the ownership of that campus. This is just terminating basically the relationship with UW.
Correct.
Wisconsin at Milwaukee.
Correct. This is just formalizing what has already happened with them vacating the building and terminating their tenancy.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16 is a resolution creating tax increment district number 17, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries in the City of West Bend, Wisconsin. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Buchlich. This was our presentation last week by Ellers and, uh, if it passes tonight, it'll move on to the Joint Review Board tomorrow morning. Any questions, discussion on this? Yeah, I, we've got a lot of TIDS out there and a lot of these are based on speculation and assumptions on the numbers. It's my understanding that the original purpose of TIDS is to address blighted in brown site areas. I know we can be creative with those, but this, this one is out there for 20 years. And so if it doesn't work out financially, then we're saddling the, the taxpayers with, with the, the bill, right? Is that correct? Do you want to comment on that?
Yes. So, um, there are, I, many different types of TIDS out there. Within the statutes, there's environmental TIDS, there's blight TIDS, there's mixed-use development TIDS like this one. So I, I guess I don't know the entire history. Phil, Phil might have been able to fill in more of the history of how the law evolved, but this is not trying to shoehorn some development under brownfield or blight. There is a mixed-use TID, you know, specific provisions for mixed-use TIDS that this falls under. So this is not like abusing the intent of the law. This is a specific purpose within, within the TID law. I can also say, and Jay can probably weigh in more in depth on this, that, uh, the city, when we set up the developers' agreements and when we negotiate them, try as hard as we can to make sure that they are strictly what's referred to as Pago, which is we don't pay for anything unless we receive tax revenue. And that has been very, I, I, I'm not sure that I can think of one, uh, since I've been city attorney that has not been a straight Pago. Um, this is no longer, if you build it, they will come. Um, that's not the goal here. Uh, and even, even in the industrial park where, yes, we've put in infrastructure, it was all put in specifically for developments that were coming. It was not like buy the land, put in the roads and cross our fingers that somebody's going to develop. Like the, the roads were put in when Milwaukee tool was going in. Further infrastructure was put in, you know, when KMMP went in. So, I mean, it's, it, it is not the, some of the more problematic TIDS that had been done in the past, which is, you know, put, put your eggs in one basket and hope that the development comes. We have been very cautious not to do that because we had some really bad TIDS that we've had to, like, try to fix through the years. So this is not one of those, none of the ones that have been created in the last 10 years have been that type of TID. Even, even the ones that are blight, like the, I believe HKS was under the blight determination. Even that was specifically, you know, they don't get any money other than an upfront grant for demolition and bearings of utilities. They don't get most of their money unless they pay, pay their tax bills at a specific valuation.
So Alderman Schmidt, I think one of the, the key points of a TID and of all TIDS in general is the but-for test. But for the creation of the TID, the development wouldn't come. And, and that, that really rings true in this instance. The, the fact that we have not had a new residential subdivision start within the last 10-plus years in the City of West Bend is telling. And it's because of the cost of the infrastructure has grown so, so much over time that developers can, can no longer afford to do what Ian just said, that he put, put it on the backs of them and if they build it, they will come. The, the cost to put in roads, sewer, water, infrastructure like that is, is too exorbitant to, to generate a resulting positive income at the end. So this mixed-use TID, which allows for up to 35%, um, is the but-for piece, but for the creation of the TID and providing an incentive that, and then Ian, again, shared in, it's a key component to part of your question, a, a developer's agreement that requires a minimum value guarantee. And although we haven't had the developer's agreement completed yet, we don't have it completed yet because you can't have that before you have the TID. Uh, it's been, it's in the works and it's in the process of being negotiated with the proposed developer and that will have a minimum value guarantee that's significant and sufficient to cover the costs that are being proposed within the TID.
Thank you. And the but-for test applies to each step of the way, too. It's for the creation of the TID, it's for the approval of each individual. It's for the creation of the TID, it's for the approval of each individual developer's agreement or development, you know, any incentives that come down the pipeline. We have to make that same finding and, you know, are very serious about making sure that it's legitimately but-for this, it would not be built.
Good question. Any more questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That motion carries six to one. All right, we will move on to item number seventeen. Jim, there's quite a few items from here on out that are plan commission related, so are you taking all of them? Okay.
Of all of them.
This first one is ordinance to amend the twenty-twenty comprehensive plan for the city of West Bend for a change in the recommended land use for approximately six acres of land located at the northwest corner of Spade Street and South Main Street.
Thank you. So the request today is ordinance approval for the land use change. Originally, this was for commercial, requesting to change it to MXD for mixed use of commercial and residential at the northwest corner of Spade and Main Street. This is to help facilitate for the development of that property for that area. And the next item goes hand in hand with that, is actually the rezoning of the property from the B-one Community Business District to the MXD District. Staff held, or we held a public hearing and plan commission on the seventh, and plan commission recommended approval of both.
I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Berquist and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then I'll entertain, that motion carries. I'll entertain a, a motion on the same property to rezone from B-one Community Business District to MXD Mixed Use District. Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next one is a comprehensive plan change for land use, approximately eighteen acres of land located on the north side of County Trunk Highway NN and west of US Highway forty-five.
Thank you. So this is a continuation of, of land use change that we had for the industrial park on NN and Eighteenth there. This is a continuation, this is actually further east, right next to the highway. So staff would recommend that we change the land use from the mixed business park to residential to be consistent with the approvals that we did for the lands to the west.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
There's a no, that's, that motion will carry six to one. Then we'll move on to item number twenty. It's the same piece of land, and this is the rezoning of that eighteen acres from M-three Plan Business Park District to RS-four Single Family Residential.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That motion will carry six to one. And we will move on to item number twenty-one, right? Item number twenty-one. Ordinance to amend the twenty-twenty comprehensive plan for a recommended land use change, sixty acres of land located on the west side of County Trunk Highway D, North Main Street, and north of both Green Tree Road and Patricia Drive.
Thank you. So back in November, we did the annexation for the, the property of the sixty-eight acres. This is actually a land use plan amendment to change some of the land uses out of the area from commercial to MXD to help facilitate the development of that property, along with adjusting some of the land uses for the residential in that area also. And then the next item is essentially establishing the permanent zoning for that property, where we're requesting the MXD on the eastern portion along Main Street, and then transitioning into two-family and single-family as you go further west into the development. And this would be consistent with the development pattern that we have out in that area.
All right, we'll take item number twenty-one first, and that's the comprehensive plan, recommended land use change, sixty-eight acres of land located on the west side of County Trunk Highway D and north of both Green Tree Road and Patricia Drive. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the same piece of land with rezoning from RS-four Single Family Residential, Mixed Use Development District, RD-two, two-family residential, P-one park rec and open space, and NSW non-shorland wetland. Did I say all that right?
Yep.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last item, Jim, is a resolution to create thirty-three feet of right-of-way east of Aerial Drive and north of the EAA Building.
Correct, thank you. So we're asking the council to consider the resolution to create a thirty-three-foot-wide right-of-way just east, or just east of Aerial Drive and to the north of the EA Building. This is to help facilitate for utility installation and access to part of the lease lots and also for utilities to be placed within the airport area for services to these airport hangars.
Any, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Moving on to our reports tonight, Plan Commission from January seventh. We did, yeah.
We met on January, or, wait a minute, which ones I got here? Oh, yeah, we approved minutes for December third. We approved the amendment to the land use map for twenty-one fifty North Main, which is the land we just talked about. Held a public hearing and requested action for the zoning map amendment for the same property. And then we had a public hearing and discussion on the comprehensive plan amendment for the Highway NN and Eighteenth, the eighteen, eighteen acres. And that was, then we approved that, recommended that come forward. We also had the public hearing for the plan amendment and the zoning for the six acres on Spade Street and Main Street. We did, we approved a commisional use here, permits after hearing for twenty-two sixty Sand Drive for wireless antenna, wireless antenna array at their property. We also had a public hearing and action on a conditional use permit for sixteen twenty-four by Daisy Sweet Treats. We had a public hearing and action for a conditional use permit on the flood fringe overlay district zone lands by Regalware. That's the driveway off of Schmidt Road and their parking lot work that they're going to do. We did approval and we approved the reconfiguration of the parking pavement and other site improvements at eleven hundred Schmidt Road, which is Regalware. We did approval for site improvements, including pavement grading filling activities at Regalware. And we took a concept plan and reviewed that with the corner of Sylvan Way and Progress Drive, which was by break-in equipment. And we also put the, we, we requested the approval to allow the creation of right-of-way lands at the airport, which we just approved. So like I said, we just did most of it.
Yeah.
And actually, can I give the airport report right away?
Yeah.
We approved, we approved the right-of-way. Although I wasn't, I did not make the meeting, but that was the report.
All right. How about the Midmarine Legislative Committee?
Yeah, I, I'll go ahead and do that. Midmarine Legislative Committee meeting was Wednesday, January eighth, at the Jackson Municipal Building. We were, city was represented by myself and Administrator Shambo. Speaker was Special Agent Aaron Dorn and one of her, actually her only other officer for, for that area. They discussed, there with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, she discussed how the recently enacted Act seventy-three changes would affect our communities. Most significant change was around a single, a new server license that can be issued by the state rather than the municipality. If municipality issues a license, it's good only in that municipality. It is fungible, the, the bartender can move from establishment to establishment, but the state license is such that they can work anywhere within the state of Wisconsin. There were some concerns voiced by people in attendance that, that, you know, the city's role to, to select good, good applicants for these licenses was reduced, and we were assured that the state looks at the same things our police do, and therefore we shouldn't worry about it. I think the jury's still out on that one, but it's, it's at least an interesting proposal. There was also guidelines for the transfer of license, facility licenses from one facility to another previously. There were geographic limits about how far apart the, the facilities could be, and, and so on. Now the restriction is, it can be anywhere in the county. So if you have a liquor license in West Bend, you can pick it up and move it to Hartford because it's in the same county. So that was the other one. And then the final thing they talked about was rules related to producers of distilled spirits and definitions, definitions of malted coolers. These are, these are like the, I'm trying to think of a good example. I don't drink them, so I'm trying, the wine cooler kind of drinks that are made with beer instead of wine. So they, there's a new, some changes around that. And then I, I've got the Tourism Commission, which I think is up next.
Sure.
Tourism Commission meeting was January fourteenth here in the council chambers. We approved minutes from the October first twenty-twenty-four meeting. We reviewed and accepted the financial report. We approved the services agreement with the Communications Department. We reviewed twenty-twenty-four major events, which was kind of interesting because we got a chance to look at the performance of the events through some new software that the city, or the Communications Department has acquired that makes use of cellphone metadata to track people that are attending events and, and where they might have gone prior to the event, or where they went after the event. Those types of things. That was quite interesting. Look forward to seeing those kinds of analytics for future events. We then reviewed, we approved a proposal to be the major, or to be the presenting sponsor of Music on Main Block Party. This is our big event, so the city is, through its Visit West Bend group, is, is the presenting sponsor of that. It was a great event, and we look forward to be bigger and more fun this year. So don't miss it. And then we have awarded twenty-twenty-five Spring and Summer Event Promotion Grants. Special notes that I, I made were Fiesta Latina for the, for second year in a row has increased the size of their event. Last year, they went from one day to two days. This year, they went from two days to three days. It's a great event. If you get a chance, it's well worth your time, and they have lots of taco trucks, so you can get great Mexican food. And as, as it has been for the last few years, it is in Regner Park, and it's a great use of the park. For the first time, the Tourism Commission agreed to sponsor an event hosted outside of the city limits at the Washington County Fair Park. We felt the, the event did in fact improve, basically, the criteria we have for awarding events, which is heads and beds. It really is an event that'll generate long-term stay. It's the Wisconsin Agricultural Tourism Association's Classic Green Reunion twenty-twenty-five, where John Deere fans and collectors can spend three days doing all manner of family-friendly tractor events. Whatever family-friendly tractor events you wish to have, come have them in the city of West Bend. Any questions?
Very good, thank you. Administrator Shambu.
I'll share a couple of quick things. One, save the date, just came together today. The John McGivern Main Streets program is going to premiere on April twenty-second at the Bend. Worked with Bend staff and John's producer to, to secure that date. It will be public and aired publicly on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, but we're going to get a chance for our community to have a sneak peek at it. So it'll be open to the public, and it'll be a free event that we're excited to bring forward. We're working on getting John here personally to, as part of that, as part of that event as well. But I'll get something out to you, but again, that just came together today, April twenty-second, a Tuesday premiere of the Main Street program that was filmed last fall in downtown West Bend. And then just a thank you to our, I thought of the utilities, had a chance to chat with an officer on Sunday, and shared with me that the utilities are awfully busy, and we had some water main breaks over the weekend and today, and this weather is inconveniencing to us all as we hustle between our warm car and, and our office or our home. But our water utility staff, sewer utility staff, police, fire, public works, and parks don't really have that opportunity to, to choose or not to work outside. So just a big thank you to our team and know that, that we care and are concerned about their safety in this, in this bitter cold weather. So thanks for, thanks for that. Any questions, I can help answer them.
Thank you. Any older person reports?
Yeah, I just want to, I've seen quite a few of water utility guys out. They've had some, quite a few water main breaks this year, and, and this temperature right now is just atrocious to be out there. But I want to compliment the guys that be out there doing their duty. And for pub, Doug Newman, for Public Works gentlemen, I know the first two snowfalls were really a headache for them, but now no, all comments are just positive right now. They did a fantastic job, they, they got it together, and they're not the only ones. Those first two snowfalls affected just about every community. So compliment both Water and Public Works Department for a great job right now.
Mark.
Just want to mention the Bog Fest, which is early in March, I believe, March first. Buy your tickets. I'm sure they're going fast. It was a great event last year. I expect it to be even better this year. So if you haven't already got your tickets, why not? Because it's, it's a be there or be square kind of event.
Brett?
I think I passed it.
Kay? Matt? Mary Beth? John? Bill?
Listen to me.
And I've, I've got, I'm a little under the weather, I apologize for that, but we did have a really nice winter warm-up this past weekend, and a little unfortunate that it was forty-six degrees, forty-eight degrees on Friday when they brought all the ice sculptures down, but I talked to a lot of the business owners who sponsored them, and they said, you know what, that's just, you know, nothing you can do about that. So I didn't talk to anybody that sponsored a sculpture who was, you know, upset that it's just, that's the weather, they said, and we were just happy to be a part of it. And so, and then Saturday was cold, and the live demo was great, and I did not make it to Luminary Walk, were you at that?
I was not.
Did anyone go to Luminary Walk? No. Anyway, it was a nice event this past weekend, so that's all. Our next meeting is...
Can I just add something quick? It was great to have Channel Four here with their Storm Chaser. We had Joel on, on air and Noel Brown on air. It was great.
I'm a, I'm a TMJ four guy, so I, I love it when those, when TMJ four comes. Our next meeting is February third, February third, and obviously check the calendar for any other committee meetings and things like that, but February third's our next common council meeting. And we stand adjourned, thanks.